I'd recommend the continuation of the contract for July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. As you can see, it's a one-year appointment and a rollover.
Can I make a motion that we approve the continuation of that agreement?
Scott.
Any discussion or questions, Scott?
Beyond approving this agreement, I really think we need to continue looking at this as an option. You know, we've demonstrated that the district can function and provide services to other districts. There are other districts that need it. There is state money that's going to be coming, I believe, to aid in consolidation and to try to streamline administrative costs, and that's what this does. We end up with, you know, 28 grand going into the general fund because we've been able to pull this off.
I appreciate that comment, Scott. You've heard me say it before, I think the opportunity is right before us, given the incentive that the government is proposing. Just so people realize this, the revenue up until this point was around $48,000. Now with this year assuming the superintendentcy, but nevertheless, $28,600 is $28,600. And I've already shared some, not at this time of the year, but when we get the budget done, I'll meet with Reagan and central office people because we want to explore those opportunities. We have some ideas that you could probably well imagine.
Any other questions or comments from the board? And is it only one year because that's all they wanted to request? Or do we usually?
Ever since we've had the agreement, we've only had a one-year contract.
That's all.
And make sure it works perfectly.
Okay.
As you know, there's a 30-day opt out here that you can see in the contract as well.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. So all those in favor? Is there anyone that's opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, Karen, we're here tonight to hopefully solidify budget. Heath and Rod have been very actively involved. We have our guest, Mr. Zinnis, here tonight, our resident expert, bringing back from the golf course, and Reagan. So Reagan, I'll ask you to tee it up for us, and we can move it from there.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Well, as we recall from last Wednesday's meeting, we did receive additional state money, and a priority list was made at the recommendation of the Budget Committee last week, and we sought to put those items together and come out with a budget that not only met all of the targets that were of interest, but also to consider an adjustment with fund balance, because that has been brought to us as a concern, both from Newburgh Town Manager and also, as mentioned, by our Hampden Town Manager. All in all, we feel like we've put together a package that is win-win. We did go back as an admin council and look at the positions, and we also came back to look at the local increases and feel as though we have some entry points that are quite palatable, especially compared to where we've been in the past this spring. So from there, what I'd like to do is pass out a couple of documents to the audience because we have made some, a couple of tweaks, and I want to make sure you have the updated materials.
a scale that we can read it, then hopefully the folks in the back of the room can read it as well, what the impact of the additional state funding would have and what that would mean at the local level. Then we'll dig back into the articles and explain where the changes will be, and we have a modification to make within Article 6 breakdown that we want to go through as well, that Heath and I have been chewing on and running through. So if you can maybe scale that up much larger than you'll need to see here so we can see it up on the wall.
Do the board members want hard copies as well? Reagan, have that. Michelle, can you say that right there? No, yes, Jake?
I can.
She can.
The size is good, it's my angle.
Thank you.
Well, we could move it. They have hard copies, you're right.
Then they have hard copies, yes, so.
So one of the fundamental important points about this budget is that we have taken this budget back to the original presentation that was made going in to the June 8 budget meeting. So when you're thinking back to the journey we've been on, please understand what we are introducing to you tonight takes you back to that point and then moves us forward with the new state money. And that choice was made just so we could keep it what I would describe as clean, have it just roll right back in. So we're looking at an FY '18 proposed budget with expenditures of $30,972,941.52. This is an increase of $891,705.63 to come in at a 2.96 gross budget. If you look to the right side of your document, you'll see a box around the expenditure variables, and that outlines for you what was put into the budget following our Budget Committee meeting last week. So agreements coming out of that meeting were a .5 K-8 tech integrator, .5 K-1 art teacher, .5 instructional support to be determined, exactly how that would play out within our budget, budget validation referendum costs that we would incur at $6,000. There was desire for substitutes to receive a raise, recognizing the challenge we're having in securing quality substitutes and keeping them. So that would be a raise to $75 per day. And there was a call for us to consider teaching supplies as a way to mitigate some of the expenses that families and, in some cases, teachers themselves may be running into during the school year, and for families, especially back-to-school expenses that are incurred. And we came in with total additions at $128,677.39. Scrolling down on that page, with the state money coming back to us, we knew that we wanted to make sure that our locals were coming in below, at 2% or below, and we strongly made that commitment in this budget. We are coming in at a net increase for locals at 1.54%. After we had made that determination, which was the primary target going into this budget creation, we recognized that once we put the positions back in, we could look at taking our fund balance and bringing that down to 440 instead of staying at the 540 after hearing the concerns from our town manager and recognizing that we want to be able to go into next year and not having such a significant requirement before us with fund balance. So overall, it seems as though we have met all of the targets, and we feel good about this.
So in the upper right-hand box, the budget validation referendum, if you were to probably, that shows the bucket we talked about at the last meeting, that really is a board-dictated item under Article 6. So if you were to pull that one out, it leaves the, for instructional, if you will, 122,677.39. So in contrast to the folks that spoke out at the budget validation referendum that's in the same room, if you will, as that requests for that number. And then we have some other items to cover on Article 6. In the handout you have, Heath and I were looking today at going back, there's a July 17 handout, we did catch the printing of that before it came out today, but as Heath and I were looking at it, we went back and looked at the, comparing to the June 19 handout that everybody had received that took Article 6 from 854 to change. So yeah, April 27, which was our pre-public vote, we were 848, 848.89. We then lowered that, it was then lowered at the budget validation referendum by roughly $48,000. I don't remember the dollars and cents. But on June 19, we handed around the impact of that to Article 6, and that showed a change in Article 6 totals, 807,315.04. So you see today, so that would be approved by the voters was 807,315.04, so that's an important number. What you have today is a number that shows 854, 848.89. So as we're looking at this, we looked at where we had adjustments and made cuts, et cetera, where we could make those cuts and adjustments, again, things that I think the impact of the June vote would not have considered because we didn't look at the line item, we just looked at a total, and so we're just going to impact Article 6. Because Heath and I went back and looked at it, we went back to the expenditure right sizing, we looked at the, this is actually the one line where the budget validation referendum might have needed to go, and we had a few changes. So on your FY '18 proposed, I'm going to read down what the numbers should be in that category. The total will be the same, there's not a change to the total that's in front of you.
And this is Article 6?
Article 6, well, that totals 854, 848.89. So for, and I'm just going to refer to them as 6.1 through 6.4. For 6.1, Board of Directors, that number should read $119,195.18. I know Reagan has the, has my notes here as well, so it will reflect in the minutes if you're not carefully writing it down. For 6.2, that would read as $30,000. For 6.3, it would read as 405,84.32. And for 6.4, it'd read as 299,769.39. So going back to June 19, which is where we really last left off, we would take the figure that was handed out at 89,791.15 plus 8404. So that total had a $98,195 line item on June 19 as an impact to the vote. We bumped that up by $21,000. $6,000 of that was the budget validation referendum, and we're proposing, again, we haven't had a budget for a finance meeting other than Heath and I getting together, so this is fresh tonight, recommending that, and again, it's built into these numbers, that there's $15,000 in that line item as well, and to give it a tag, I would put the term audit next to it for supplemental, or supplemental audit or additional auditing. So that would add $21,000 in that line item. Item 6.2, which came out of June, the June vote, is an $8,000 line item. And looking at the history of where we're headed, where we've had legal expense, et cetera, and where we've seen recent requests or requests that have influenced the need for legal, we wanted to bump that up by 22,000 over the 8 to make it 30. It's actually $5,000 more than the original 25 we had before the June vote. So it's basically putting $5,000 more in from our budget preparation process, but compared to June, it's putting 22 because that item got cut back. Item 6.3, there's no change, that's a superintendent item, those are contracted amounts, those aren't really changed. And for 6.4, we added to the June 19 spreadsheet $4,533.85 to address what I would just refer to as a third-party engagement of a person to go back through five years of records for a request. So that's the time or the expense needed for that effort. So if we add those four items up, they should equal 854, 848, 89. It's just a little bit different, and trying to remain transparent in article, in all the articles, we want to make sure that people are looking at it in the context of where we last looked at it, June 19 to now, not going all the way back to April, because again, the first changes that Reagan talked about really reflected, I think, a desire of those present at the budget validation referendum to put more money into instructional, and they also wanted to take money out of Article 6. Again, you're hearing from the budget chair and the finance chair, absent any meeting to, of those boards, because we've been running basically from one special board meeting to another since the vote. So there is no formal recommendation from the Budget Committee or from the Finance Committee other than what we're hearing tonight, so the decision will be made as a full board at your free will, if you will. So I'm assuming there'll be some questions, but again, the item that Reagan put up, the total stands, and all of those impacts to local, et cetera, are still valid as she reported, so. And we're sorry we didn't get the fresh copy to you, but we were looking at this all day, basically, to try to figure out how to right-size some of these. We just weren't comfortable with where some of those line items had ended up, and some of them, quite frankly, we can't take them out of the line items, and I think the folks that voted to reduce that Article 6 didn't realize that it would impact the board line item and not the other, some of the other line items.
Any questions about that specifically, Scott?
No, not about that.
Okay, that's right.
A comment about that specifically. So, because the Article 6 was the one that was changed, voted 40-some thousand dollars lower, but that was also the article that Town Manager Jennings referenced, that we have had a history of overspending on that article for unforeseen causes, and the attempt, the original attempt, as I remember it, in the budget was to right-fit that line item so that going forward, there was less of a chance that we would overspend that item and that we would actually be budgeting for what we truly expected. And if it's a year where we have no unexpected expenses, maybe there is some money that goes into the unallocated fund balance at the end of the year, but we're trying to do what the Town Manager of Newburgh and Winterport and Hampden have been asking us to do, which is to budget what you actually think you're going to spend in each line.
Correct.
That's what's been asked of us the last couple of years. So I want to point out why that number has sort of moved back up in my estimation, and I think it's a good thing that we do that.
Good point.
And I have a, I do have a question about the overall budget later, once we get back to it.
Any other questions about Article 6?
Let me follow up on Scott's last point if I can, just to go back to the pre-June 8 district budget meeting, to remind you, when we started the budget process, the local increase was 4.68%. Right now, we're standing at 1.57. Let me share each town for the benefit of the audience. So Hampden's increase would have been 4.06, it's now .98. Newburgh is 4.4, it's now 1.26. Winterport was 6.22, it's now 3.03. And Frankfurt was at 5, it's now at 1.88. So that shows you the pre-June 8 meeting as it brings us to this evening.
And just to remember the point, too, the reason Winterport's share is higher is because Winterport had a valuation change.
That's correct.
That is, that's not the purview of this board, that is a number that comes to us.
And increase in student enrollment, I think.
That's correct. Matter of fact, let me double-check that.
Note the valuation.
Yes, yes. Well, and just to add on to what Scott said, I think when the issue is raised of the overruns, in many cases, the overruns were actually in the board line item, and they were to pay, I would call it unforeseen expense, it was only unforeseen because at the time of the budget was passed, it was not seen. However, in this case, we've had three additional months, if you will, to prepare the budget. Other things have come up that would have been unforeseen that are now actually presented tonight.
You may be, your recall is very good. You may be interested in these figures. These are valuation increases from year to year. Hampden was 1.1, Newburgh 1.2, Winterport 3.2, and Frankfurt 1.7.
Which roughly tracked the increase in?
Pupil adjustments from year to year, Hampden up 1.6, Newburgh 4.7, Winterport 2.9, and Frankfurt 10.7. So you can see the difference.
Things that happened in Winterport.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
I also like to point out that it is not noted on the handout, but the .5 instructional support to be determined, I think we can safely say that will be reallocated to support the sabbatical that the board approved in November 2016. We've spoken as a board and with superintendent lines, so that funds, those funds will be allocated for that sabbatical.
The other thing to remind you, Article 16 through 20 will not appear on the next year's district budget meeting because those were approved. If you remember, Article 20 was the infamous, if we restate, if we receive state money. However, there will be two adjustments. We need to have the UTC articles on there because they're basically factoring, because we have the money in the budget, but UTC through their charter requires each school district to have it at the local level. So those will be two adjustments. There's no fiscal adjustment, it was a bit more procedural in nature. I'm assuming you've discussed that.
Well, they didn't really talk about it, except that I have to sign a form validating our budget to them.
There you go. So those will be on, we'll have five off and two on.
So do we need to, I know we said we're not going to rehash Article 20 because it's no longer needed, but I don't know what those funds are, but do we need to rescind that or note that it's no longer used?
Reagan, I think that rescinding is permissible. Didn't we discuss that with Greg?
Do we need to just state that when the advertisement goes out, just to state that Article 20, although previously you?
It's, according to law, Article 20 is dead at June 8.
Okay.
So it's dead. So in other words, now that you have new state money, you don't have to have Article 20 anymore.
He did email it.
Because there was, you weren't sure what you were going to get for state money. So it's, Article 20 is dead.
Maybe when we mail out the advert, we could just state that simply, because I think there will be confusion for those of you following along, you know, what happened to Article 20? And just to state that would be perfect.
Greg did email it to me. Matter of fact, Scott, in the same question you and I were having about the compilation of budgets. Yeah. I have it.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I do have one question. So we have the fund balance adjustment, which is, if I understand it correctly, is saying we are taking $100,000 less from the fund balance than we were going to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so how does that affect the 3%?
We have a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And in order to make it maybe more clear to folks, we actually, the decisions we'll make tonight will actually impact the FY '18 budget, if you will, because what we approve for the transfer happens in this next budget. So what affects this year's budget is what was approved the year before and so on. And the way the law reads, it's the budget of, or the amount in the unallocated fund balance shall not exceed 3% of the preceding year. So basically, by looking forward to what our decisions will do and looking back at historically where they've been, making sure that it's not just the amount that you move out of unallocated fund balance to reduce local share, it's other things that are moved out of local fund, unallocated fund balance that affected as well. The law states that the balance shall not be more than 3%. So what Reagan put together to make sure everyone is perfectly clear, because there was confusion, I think what happened in some of the conversations, when we were talking about 440, that was about this coming year. It just so happens that last year, the amount that was approved was 439,037. I know some people were rounding that up in round terms to 440, and there was confusion, well, does that apply to this year or last year? So we went down through from '16, which is important, because '16, so we're being asked, usually between March and May, to decide what we're going to transfer out of unallocated fund balance for the following year, before our year is even done, before we know what amount will be spent or used, before generally our July-August draft of our final budget, if you will, that sent to audit, was sent out, and before we return and hear back officially from the state that it's been approved with any final adjustments, et cetera. So realistically, and they've been as late as December?
With the audit?
So we're being asked to decide an amount that we're going to take out of next year, up to six months before we actually know what that final number is. So to just ground everybody, I went back to '16 because around December of '16, we had our final state audited amount. And you can see that on the form, we had, our cumulative balance that we've been showing is 1.49078324. Now, that also included, and actually, do I have that sheet here, or I'll have to read the top header of yours. The two adjustments are the adult ed being shown in that line item, that's in column G, and column H is other, like professional development, some of those reimbursement supplemental, like now, now in July, et cetera. So what that meant was, for that year, the fund balance was actually, with the official state audit, and you can see that in the official state audit, it says 1.521412.13. That's the $1.5 million fund balance that we've been talking about.
And how's the viewing for the audience? Would you like it larger?
Better?
Can you see it?
Good. So if the law had been in effect in 2016, we did a test. We said, okay, if we took 3% of that year's budget, which we know was $29,678,782, and applied 3% to that, it would yield a total allowable fund balance of 8936346. What it shows is that our balance exceeded that at 1.521 by $631,048.67. Well, as it turns out, that year, we approved expenditures of moving $439,037.50 to fund balance. $20,288 was for the accrual expenditures, and then $90,000 was transferred, it was actually a warrant Article 18, I think, in '16, that was warrant Article 18 of $90,000. All three of those items added together equal $649,326.22 that was transferred out of fund balance in that year's fund balance, which exceeds the $631 that we were over. Basically, would, if the law had applied last year, we would have moved funds to allow that to meet. So we said, okay, moving forward, now we have a bunch of blanks here because we don't have FY '17 activity yet. So today, Heath and I said, what if it roughly matched, what if it was, instead of $843,000 as last year, what if it was $600,000 combined for unanticipated revenue and below-budget expenditure? So if we close the books and that results in a $600,000 change, that would take, would move what was currently roughly an $841,000 fund balance, it would put $600,000 back in, which I think Jake, at several meetings, was saying, well, you got to put that money back in. Well, we don't know exactly what it is yet, so tonight, we're doing a what-if scenario. That would put it back up to 1.44145702. That's an imaginary number right now, it's a placeholder. If we apply the same 3% math to that, but we do it to the '17 budget that was approved of $30,148,735.89, we should not have exceeded $904,462 in the fund balance. What that means is we're over by $567,623.83. So tonight, we're talking about moving $440,000 over. That's the number that Scott was just talking about, why is it 440? We also, at the budget meeting in June, approved transferring $150,000 out of fund balance to capital. to capital. Those two combined add up to a 590,000 transfer. Responding to, I believe, the Town Manager for Newburgh, are we taking out too much? If you look at the 150, the 440, and we've said before that we need to take out roughly 540 to hit that target, what you're seeing right now is that we're actually moving 590, it's a little more than the minimum, or the targeted target, if you will, that would put us below the state maximum in our fund balance. So then, again, rolling forward, what if next year, another 600,000 rolled into the budget, we'd be back at about a 1.45 million fund balance, and we'd be doing it all over again, if you will. There'll be, there might be allocation for other funds, there will no longer, the only thing that was known from the year, from now, and it wouldn't have been if the voters had not already approved it in our first budget meeting, is that 150. Normally, we would have approved the transfer in that 150, basically at the same time or during the same process. So what we're doing is looking basically back at the previous year, to guide us on where we roughly need to be in this year. So the 440 plus the 150 is a little more than the 540 we talked about, but again, 150's already been approved. The 440 feels about right, based on previous years, and if we kind of run the scenario out next year, again, we're making a guess on the 600,000, if it were 800,000, what would happen if we changed this year to 800,000?
This year?
Yeah. We would not have transferred enough, and perhaps that's why the state says you have up to three years to do it, because if we put down 590 this year, and we should have done 760, that means next year, we need to put 200 to pay back towards this year. So it allows you, that first year, where you came to really answer the question, to figure out what the number needs to be, the second year to target it and allocate it. Now, what happens if you overspend, it's just a cap, so they don't credit you if you pay more down one year than the other. It just says your unallocated fund balance cannot exceed 3%, or that amount has to be returned next year, or it has to be reduced next year. So that's where we're at.
The other thing I talked to Heath a little bit about today, if you go back to our old Article eighteen, is the capital reserve account. We should be talking about that next year, and how much money we may want to look to roll into that. This year, we had a cap of 150. Given the athletic committee working on the next two or three years, that number is going to be much larger than that, so we'll want to discuss that as well. I just sent you an email, this gets back to the article, the infamous Article twenty, for the benefit of the audience, that should be pretty much a moot point now, because the email from the lawyer reads this way, the new law, that's what they refer to it as, but the budget bill addresses how additional state subsidy must be used if approved of the school budget, includes a voter-approved article on disposition of additional state subsidy. Because the RSU 22 budget will be based on updated state funding figures and will not include an article on disposition of additional state subsidy, the new law does not apply. So that's good news, in my opinion, not only because we know what the money, and now we can do some things with the known factor. So Karen, that's where we are, and Rob, with respect to the budget, is pretty self-explanatory, the 2.96 gross, 1.54 local, with the adjustments that Rob has mentioned in consultation with Heath, and hopefully they'll seek down board ratification, so we can move forward for Tuesday.
The one issue on the sabbatical, and I'd just like to reflect back on it, because that approval the Board made was conditioned on the budget, which, thank goodness, as of 415 last week, we were given a new number that we confirmed was what it was, and we're able to now basically clarify our position on that again, and, you know, remove the condition, if you will, because the condition's been met, so.
Right.
Good point.
Any other questions of the Board, or is somebody prepared to make a motion?
I move that we accept the budget as presented.
Can you read the motion that's in the note?
I'll try to find it.
Is it the agenda notes?
Yeah.
Hold on. I recommend the endorsement of the 2017-2018 budget of 30,972,941.52, representing an increase at 2.96 percent and a local increase at 1.55 percent.
And that's Jane's motion, is there a second?
Second.
We just wanted you to do the hard work.
Opening up for our discussion, again, any final questions, thoughts, concerns?
Yes, I will ask a question, regarding to the positions that were put back in, and I understand the thinking behind them and what went into that. To what, what's the process, though, as the year goes on, for us to sort of watch? The English one is the one I keep thinking about, you know, how do we make sure that we're tracking that, engaging that, action that we take?
That's a good question. I would look for Mr. Tracy to certainly keep me in the loop, and probably the best response now, as you well know, once we move into a year, if conditions change, that would warrant a serious conversation to potentially add, I'd bring that to the Board with justification. And in my historical perspective here, the Board is using that with great receptivity once I say, here's the need, here's how we can fund it, and then bring it together. So for example, I'll later reference three or four years ago, when we had the situation at Weddaby School, where the voters put money in the budget, prescribed it for one position, but we added a grade-five position because we knew the need. So once Mr. Tracy comes to me and says, here's the need, then I'd come to the Board, and we'd do it the same, in the same way. And that gets back to that contingency conversation again, and what Rob's brought up a number of times, what I call the ebbs and flows in a budget.
Any other questions or comments?
Excuse me.
All those in favor? Is there any opposition? Great.
So, a reminder, then, our next time to be together will be next Tuesday, at seven o'clock, is the District Budget Meeting, which will obviously replicate what we did the first time, and the referendum validation is Tuesday, August 1. I did have confirmed today, for the benefit of the audience, the absentee ballots are at the town offices. So if you know you're going to be out, you can secure an absentee ballot, and you can vote after Tuesday night.
After the 25th?
Yes, after we know what the budget level is, you can vote. You might want to check with the town office, I do not know the time, you have to have it back to the town office, whether it's three-day window or five, so if you're going to be out of the country for two or three weeks, it might be an issue, but you can secure your absentee ballot, vote after the District Budget Meeting affirms the budget on the 25th, and then you'll be able to vote if you're going to be out of town.
And for the Chair's benefit, I would like to point out that I did not want to run everyone through the gymnastics of all of it, Article nine, due to the conflict that it has in the past or may present for our business, being sometimes within that article, but since that article has not changed from the last time we broke that out, I do feel the need to abstain from that again. I'm supporting the entire budget with the note that I still abstain from Article nine piece, and it hasn't changed, so.
Great. Scott?
Town Manager Angus Jennings had brought that additional piece for the ballot to us, regarding the...
The advisory piece.
The, is the budget too high, too low, or okay, so that we could have a sense going forward. Is that still doable?
Yeah.
Because I would love to see that on there.
Reagan emailed, I know you had talked to us...
I believe he's doing it, he's doing it.
When you say he's doing it, is that on for Handen?
I would say, the ballot...
Carry on.
I believe...
Guesses first.
I believe that the ballots are being printed with the advisory question on the ballot, if it's too high, too low, it's being on. The question was, usually, customarily, if you have to choose, it has to be a 30-day notice, but on this particular circumstance, it doesn't have to be, and our legal counsel agreed that it's a question, it does not have to be posted 30 days in advance, but could be posted seven days in advance. So that was the question.
But is that something that's just going to be on Handen, or is that going to be on...
On all of them.
We'll confirm that tomorrow, but I call that Lewis and Advisory, it's the Lewis and Advisory.
Yeah.
The Goldilocks ballot.
I don't want to... I believe the ballots are being printed that way.
We'll double-check tomorrow.
Yeah, I was wondering if we had to sign something to make that happen? I'm glad you brought that up.
No, it does not.
I think we made it happen, because we went with it.
So formally, what do we need to endorse or sign tonight that needs to be mailed? You have the warrant right there, which is another question.
Just one copy, I hope.
One copy. But I've had it indicated to me that the order in which you sign matters, so we need to do this assembly line style, so that your signatures are on the same line on every warrant that you do sign.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll just start with Heath and go around.
Remember last time they all changed sides?
Always trying to get out of you.
I think for years. So is there anyone that requires a pen? I'll borrow Wally's. Oh, I could check him out. Any meetings we need to set? We're good?
We had set an athletic committee meeting for the 25th at 5:30, it wasn't on the Board calendar, so I just want to make sure that it's there. That was prior to the District Budget Meeting, that night, so.
Where's that going to be?
I would assume we could probably do it downstairs, probably the principal's conference room.
What's the date again?
The 25th at 5:30.
25th at 5:30.
Yep, they want another long night.
Right.
Bring snacks.
Sit beside Jane again, she brings snacks.
Right, nice, I didn't know that, thank you.
Yes. Any other meetings we need to set?
Scott one, Nick.
We have no old business, so I'd add...
Hold on, before you go past the community relations, so the Community Relations Committee does have a meeting this Thursday at 4:00 PM, I'm pretty sure it's going to be here in the library, but I bring this up because we're going to be discussing the frequently asked questions document. I'm going to not release it before that, so that if people do come to the meeting, they can read it for the first time, just like they would if they were just clicking online to see it, so that we can get good feedback as to whether or not it's understandable, and does it answer the questions that you want to answer in a very quick and concise way. This is not meant to be the full explanation of all things, but does it give you good information quickly? So I want to, and we're going to, I'm going to put this on Facebook as well, so that hopefully people will come to this meeting, so that we can get good feedback from the community. And this is also going to be part of, Rick and I talked about it, and I think we're going to be able to get this on our next board member, Board Agenda. There was an idea brought forth that the state has the capacity to perform an inspection of a district, and this can be done by either community members or the Board requesting that the state do this, and it's the Department of Education that does it. But in order to do that, questions need to be devised that would be answered by the inspection. It's not a financial audit, but it is, it looks at process, and it can look at financial as well. So this meeting will be part of talking this through, and trying to figure out what questions are out there in the community that really need to be answered. If we don't end up doing any kind of an inspection, that's fine, because we will still, the Board will have better information about what are the questions that people in the community want to have answered. But that's going to be part of our next Community Relations Committee meeting as well, so I wanted to put that out there as well.
Scott, for those of us that are recently returned from being off the grid and having caught up on all the emails, how are we at with the responses to these frequently asked questions, or at least in the form of some of the community that specifically asks questions in advance of...
The frequently asked questions are pretty much done. The only holdup are actually two questions that I volunteered to answer, that I still have to finish up, but that's why we are going to present those to some community members at the Community Relations Committee meeting coming up, and then a quick redrafting, and then hopefully post them onto Facebook, at the very least, and then, working with Nate, we'll get them onto the actual website.
Pre-vote.
Pre-guest.
Thank you.
Waiting for John Holmes. Okay, so we have no old business.
Coming right after you.
Sorry.
No old business? Any other questions on the Board?
Actually, one coming.
Scott!
I know, I'm on fire.
Scott!
Well, but I want to thank Garrett and Nate and the administration for providing us with a sender microphone.
Yeah.
I know that we have heard from a lot of community members that it's hard to hear when you're in the room, and it's really hard to hear when you are online watching the YouTube videos, so hopefully, this is going to work a little better, but we are also, it's a work in progress, so we are going to, part of the communications plan moving forward is going to be, how do we make this all better affordably?
It gets back to now's the question a little bit, because we are going to look at some proposals, Nate and I actually have talked about it over the last year or two. Once we see something that seems somewhat reasonable with a price tag, obviously, we'll come to the Board and see what recommendation with the fiscal note as well, so maybe we can get a little bit more 21st century equipment.
I like the plastic taper on it, actually.
Very classy.
It's hardly noticeable, though, it's so clear.
Any other comments or questions, Scott?
Yeah, so I was just, no.
All right, great, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Who will adjourn?
Did you make a motion, Rob?
So you will adjourn?
Oh, great, second, is there, thank you. All those in favor? Is there anyone that's opposed? Thank you very much, both.